Now just a regular Board of Education meeting. It is November 3rd, 2025. We will open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Here.
Carlos Harp?
At present with notice.
Mary Harp?
At present with notice.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Mark Kimball?
Here.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Here.
Gloria Thompson?
Here.
Good evening. Do public usually do the awards first? Why, it's not enough. Ah, it is. Public input is a vital part of how Madison District Public Schools operates. The Board of Education values hearing from parents, staff, and community members because these perspectives help guide the district toward achieving its mission. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at every Board of Education meeting. This time allows parents and community members to share their thoughts, ideas, and concerns about school-related topics directly with the Board. Anyone wishing to speak must complete a request form and submit it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes. Comments that follow these guidelines are accepted and considered by the Board. Public comment is more than formality. It is one of the ways the Board gathers input to make decisions in the best interest of the students. Community voices help shape policies, programs, and priorities that support student success. While Board members cannot respond to comments or engage in dialogue during meetings, concerns may be referred to the appropriate administrator for follow-up. The Board also works with district staff to ensure community questions and suggestions are addressed.
This collaboration between the Board and the public strengthens our ability to fulfill our mission to provide a rigorous curriculum that engages every student regardless of their current academic level in a safe, supportive, and nurturing environment for all students.
Did we receive any requests?
No, ma'am.
Anybody up here?
No.
Nope. All right. With that, we will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Perry.
Good evening. We are going to honor our staff and students for the month of November, and let's start backwards. Let's start with Madison High School.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. We will start with, um, we're honoring 11th graders, and we will start with a student, Isabel Dardini. I don't think she is present here tonight, so we'll just read a couple of the statements from our teachers. Izzy brings energy and kindness everywhere she goes, whether she's cheering on the sidelines or brightening someone's day in the hallway. Her outgoing spirit lifts everyone up. That's why she's our Student of the Month. And Izzy has been a wonderful addition to our student body. She is always kind, so we are happy to have Izzy. And we'll move on to our next Student of the Month. Who is present? Christian Payne, come on up, Christian.
Okay. So, for November, we have for our students, District Live is the Brave Leader Award. So some of things from Christian's brag speech, you can't read them all, but we'll choose a few. Christian's courage shines through in everything he does, whether he's lending a hand to someone in need or trying something completely new. He leads by example with quiet confidence and a strong sense of self. He's not afraid to step outside his comfort zone, joining new clubs, taking on new challenges in sports, always showing up as his true self. His bravery is in the way he supports others, stays true to his values, and encourages those around him to do the same. His actions remind us that courage isn't just about bold moves, but about everyday choices to do what's right, even when it's hard.
Christian is always there to lift others up, on the field, in the clubs, or just around school. He's the kind of person who supports everyone and makes things better by just showing up. Did you just read that? Okay, that's why he's our Student of the Month. And Christian is always there to help and support his fellow peers. He jumps in, helps teachers, and is all-around a compassionate individual. So, Christian, thank you for being such an amazing leader in our building. Congratulations.
Hey, and for our Staff Member of the Month, she was out sick today, so we have Ms. Anne Smiley as our Staff Member of the Month. She takes the cake for the Brave Leader Award. She couldn't possibly take on any more than she already does, sponsoring the senior class, drama club, student council, our Dollars for Scholars, and our National Honors Society. We cannot thank her enough for dedicating all of her time, energy, and leadership to our Eagles.
All right. And I had the privilege of working with Smiley at one of my previous schools, and she was top of mind when an opening came up for the Social Studies Department. Ms. Smiley truly is the epitome of what it means to have an unshakable work ethic. She is involved in literally everything in this school. She sponsors almost every group so that students can be involved in school activities. She is truly amazing, and I don't know what we would do without her. Thank you, Ms. Smiley, for all you do. And we just see our Student of the Month walking in. Izzy Dardini, come on up so we can honor you, please. Izzy, you get honored twice, so come on. Yeah, all right. All right. So Izzy has been a great addition to MHS. She has stepped outside of her comfort zone with pride and determination despite any differences she may have faced. What makes her stand out even more is the way she shows up for others. She is the kind of friend who's always there, the one who listens, who supports, and who isn't afraid to speak up when something isn't right. She stands by her peers and stands up for them when they need it. Most of all, she isn't a quitter. She pushes through even when things get tough, and her quiet strength inspires many around her. Resilient shows through her determination to overcome challenges, stay focused, and continue to grow as the amazing student she is. And then Izzy has been a wonderful addition to our student body. She is always kind. And lastly, Izzy brings energy and kindness everywhere she goes, whether she's cheering on the sidelines or brightening up someone's day in the hallway. Her outgoing spirit lifts up everyone, and that is why she's Student of the Month. So let's congratulate Izzy again. Okay, we'll take a picture. You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll have Principal Jones next.
Good afternoon, Board members. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I am Principal Jones. I am here to honor our two students for the bravery award from Wilkinson Middle School, and that is Matthew Thomas and Jaleah Pitts. If I can have them come up with their teacher, Ms. Jody Berger. Berger. Ms. Berger, you want to come up with me? Hey, guys. You're okay? You're ready? Hold that. Hold that. Can I talk? You want to talk? So, Matthew and Jaleah are our new addition to Wilkinson Middle School. They are being honored today for being our brave students.
Hello, this is me, Matthew Thomas, S2.
S2? Okay. You want to say your name?
Jaleah, that I did a good job at the school, and I got a way to go.
And so, as the new additions to our middle school, they have been a complete joy in the building. They are matriculating through the building very well, just being a leader, believe it or not, as examples to other students on how to act, what to do, and just showing courage in everything that they do. I'm going to read you their awards, and it just says, "For demonstrating courage by taking risks, standing up for what's right, and inspiring others through bold actions." They're around the lunchroom, they're sitting with their friends now, and it's just a joy. The students are just high-fiving them through the hallway, and for them to just come into our building and just making new ways and just doing new things and just being so brave on their own, we honor them today. So join me in honoring them with their teacher, Ms. Berger.
I just wanted to say a couple words. I have loved working with these students this year, and I realize how brave they are going from elementary school to middle school. It's a big change. Everything's different. Blackers, halls to walk through, people everywhere just, you know, looking at them, and everybody is so open and honest and accepting, and people want to talk. And I appreciate so much Jaleah's optimism. She always is like, "Okay, she's gonna go, she's gonna do it." And if she's not in the mood, she still does it. She's been awesome. Matthew, he is always up to try something new, and if he's not, he'll do it anyway. It's been a great year.
Who we know? Your favorite superhero is a Batman, Jason, or Spider-Man? Batman and the Joker.
Public speaking is coming up.
Think about the Joker.
Oh, did you get a picture?
Ms. Feifield, Kristen Feifield, is our Brave Leader Award for our Staff of the Month. She's unable to be with us tonight, but we do want to take the time to honor her tonight. She is our math teacher. She is a second-year teacher here at Wilkinson. I'm sorry, Matthew. She's our second-year teacher at Wilkinson, a great addition to our staff. Bravery, teaching the kids a lot of rigor in math, and we honor her today. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Madison Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody. I do not see either of my students here tonight, which is surprising, but we'll still honor them in their absence. We honored fourth graders this month, and Lila Hames was the first fourth grader chosen. Lila has shown incredible courage and leadership since joining our school in the middle of the year. From day one, she approached a new environment with confidence, kindness, and an open heart, quickly building friendships and becoming a positive presence in the classroom. Lila consistently stands up for herself and others, showing compassion and integrity in her words and her actions. She's never afraid to share her ideas, ask thoughtful questions, or speak up when something doesn't seem right. Her bravery helps others find their own voices, and she encourages her classmates to feel confident and capable too. Whether she's working with a partner, leading a group activity, or helping a classmate who's having a tough day, Lila leads by example. Her actions remind everyone around her what true courage looks like, not just in the big moments, but in the small, everyday choices to be kind, honest, and brave. And for those reasons, we truly, for those reasons, Lila truly deserves to be recognized as our Student of the Month for courage. We're so proud of Lila. Well done. Our second student is Xander Miraflex, and he was chosen for his outstanding courage. It's really easy to see why. Xander approaches every challenge with a can-do attitude and a quiet confidence that inspires those around him. Whether he's tackling a new skill, speaking up for what's right, or offering help to a classmate in need, he consistently demonstrates bravery, determination, and heart. Xander doesn't shy away from difficult situations. He meets them head-on with perseverance and a willingness to learn from every experience. His positive attitude sets the tone for others, reminding us and them that courage isn't about the big moments, it's about showing up every day with kindness, effort, and integrity. Xander's fearless spirit and supportive nature make him a true leader in our school. We're so proud of the example that he sets for his peers and the strength of character that he shows in everything he does. Congratulations, Xander, on this well-deserved recognition. Your courage makes a difference in our school every single day. And for our Brave Leader Award, our Staff Member of the Month is Jessica Bain. Come on up. Jessica is one of our Resource Room teachers, and she was nominated by her peers because she models exactly what we hope our students will demonstrate each day: compassion, integrity, and open-heartedness. According to her colleagues, she builds strong relationships with students, and her approachable, accepting nature is a true gift to staff members as well. She is endlessly adaptable and patient, and she has a special talent for helping kids grow into not only good students, but good humans as well. Ms. Bain is amazing with students, and she always goes above and beyond to make them feel seen, valued, and loved while encouraging them in the ways they need to be successful. Her classroom is an incredibly comforting space, and even students who don't receive her services know and love her, and literally ask to go to her classroom. Along with the deep impact she makes on students, Jessica is also a wonderful colleague and friend. She's always willing to jump in and help wherever needed by serving on multiple committees, leading after-school clubs, helping with traffic duty in the mornings and afternoons, and stepping into whatever roles are needed. What makes all of this even more impressive is that Jessica is, this is only Jessica's second year at Madison, but you'd never know it based on the connections, relationships, and positive impact she's already made. She started with us as a long-term sub, but she fit in so seamlessly that she quickly became a valued, treasured member of our school family. Then, when the teacher that she was subbing for resigned, I thought to myself, "Oh, boy, what are we gonna do?" But I know that it was divine intervention that she was there because she was exactly what we needed and more. Thank you, Jessica.
Next, we'll have Madison Early Childhood Center.
Okay, we are going to honor two of our students from Ms. Deani's kindergarten.
Hello. I'm Ms. Deani, one of the kindergarten teachers, and the first student I'd like to honor is Jamila. Unfortunately, she cannot be here tonight, but when the school year first began, Jamila was a little shy and quiet, but over time, she has started to show us her wonderful personality. She comes to class every day, ready to learn, putting care and effort into every activity she does. Jamila's hard work truly shines through everything she does, whether she's completing her assignments, helping a classmate, or showing her creativity through her beautiful coloring. She also loves spending time with her friends and brings a kind, cheerful spirit to our classroom every day. I am so proud of how much Jamila has grown. All right. And my second Student of the Month is Berzain. All right. Every morning, Berzain shows up to school with a big smile on his face, often running into the building full of energy and excitement for the day ahead. Throughout the year, he has really grown comfortable in the classroom and lets his fun, goofy, and silly personality shine every day. He works hard, tries his best on every activity, and always brings positive energy into our class. I'm so proud of how much Berzain has grown and the joy he brings to our classroom and everyone around him. Congratulations.
Our Staff of the Month, we're honoring Ms. Kayla Mitchell. Kayla consistently puts her students' needs above all else, boldly advocating for them and ensuring they have every opportunity to succeed. She faces challenges head-on, staying calm and composed even in unexpected or difficult situations, and never shies away from doing what is right for her students. Her courage and unwavering commitment make her a true champion for the children in her care. Some of the staff have said about what a great job she does with all of her students, she goes above and beyond, and Kayla is truly an asset to the ECC. Her dedication, courage, and unwavering commitment to her students set her apart. For consistently putting students first, advocating for their needs, and handling challenges with grace and composure, we are proud to honor Kayla Mitchell as our Staff of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations, everyone, that received awards. I wanted to say, we will give a five-minute break for those who have to leave. However, if you would like to stay, you are welcome to stay. With that, thank you again for attending, and congratulations to the award winners. It is 7:22. We will come back in at 7:29. Do you want to go into closed session anyway? Okay. Going to go back in and start with the administrative report.
So tonight, we have a special presentation from our very own Mr. Andra to let you guys know how we did this fall at the Open Air Market.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Perry. A bit offended that everyone left, but, uh, 'cause that happens. Okay, so I wanted to give you a quick recap of our third annual Open Air Market and Fall Fest. Third annual, so the first and second year, we held this event in the summer, and the feedback was it was a bit too hot, so we transitioned to the fall, which, as you'll see, was a good decision. We also added a theme, Fall Fest, to the market. There was the threat of rain, but the skies opened, and beautiful weather was present for that day, so we were very happy, so. Advance to the next slide.
Oh, it's gone.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so the five goals for our event were listed here on the slide. Community and family engagement, fundraising for at-risk programs, district promotion and visibility, enrollment opportunities, and fundraising for district clubs, organizations, and athletics. So as you see on the right-hand side of the slide, each student was given, in the district, was given a student ticket and three of the blue raffle tickets. Each of those raffle tickets were worth a dollar apiece. When they brought that student ticket to the goodie bag section, which is in the circle, they were given a goodie bag showing on the left, and that had some different treats, some coupons for some local restaurants, and then those tickets were worth a dollar apiece. And those tickets could be I didn't get a total of how much money they made, but they're out there with a lot of goodies. And then here's just a picture on the right is prior to us opening the event, as the vendors all set up, just kind of give you a visual of what it looked like, and we had four rows of vendors. And then on the left-hand side is, that's the line for the balloon artist, and then some of the sidewalk chalk that was, or art from our students. And this is our, one of our more popular treats. It's a caramel apple, but kind of with a different twist to it. It's not on a stick, so. So that day, we had $2,300 approximately in money that we brought in, and our account balance for the open air market is around $16,000. And again, that money's used for at-risk programming, such as self-contained classrooms or any other at-risk programming. Here's the team that made it all possible. I'm not sure about the one with the Michigan State shirt. She didn't get the memo that we're all wearing Madison gear, but.
Go green!
Yeah, we'll give her a pass. I think she's our veteran employee of our district, the longest-serving employee so far. So it's Andrea, Joanne, I'm hiding in the back, there's Ricky, Denise, Travis, Christina and Travis. And I'll leave you with this last slide. It was a district-wide event. All our buildings and programs were there in some form or fashion. So I appreciate your support. Looking forward to next year, September, mid-September, probably we'll have this event again, and it's going to be bigger and better the next year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say something?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you to the team because they did this on their own time. No one asked for extra pay, extra hours. They really put this together on their own. So thank you, Mr. Andra, for doing this for the third year. So we really appreciate you.
That's it for my report. All righty. Next is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If any member of the board or any citizen requests discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will become the first item of business under the Board of Education. Action items portion of the agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the minutes of the occasion for the regular meeting October 6, 2025, approval of the 2025 expenditures in the amount of $1,984,518.62, and approval of the personnel report submitted by Human Resources on October 27, 2025. Can we have a maker in support, please? Trustee Thompson. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Stara McElpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
And Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Next up is closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681H to discuss written opinion of council. I need a maker in support.
President, I make a motion. We go into closed session.
I'll support.
Trustee Kimball and Trustee Thompson, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Stara McElpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
It is 7:38. Mr. Seven. 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 Mr.
You can make a motion to table events until the next meeting. Or postpone it for the next meeting, yeah.
It is nine eleven. First. Order of new business is reading of the policy updates. P O seven five four oh, P O seven three one zero, P O six five five zero, P O five five zero zero, P O five three four zero, P O five three three zero. Does anybody want me to read them?
No.
Okay. Then can we have a motion? This is the first reading.
The first reading, no.
You don't do a motion with the first reading. You just do the first reading.
Can I talk about it real quick? I'll be real quick. So I just wanted to say that two weeks ago, we were able to update the policies. Most of them are around A I guidance, electronic signatures, so on and so forth. Things that we are doing, but it hasn't been supported in our policy due to the changes in technology. So that's a general overview of the policy updates.
Anybody else? Financial consultant. Do you want to open it or do you want me to? Go ahead.
Do you want to open it?
Go ahead.
So this new business on the agenda was around a financial consultant. We decided to go with when we hired our new director of business and finance. As you guys know, most of the time in Madison District Public Schools, because we are a small district, we are considered a growing district. So trying to hire someone with experience in the world where positions are so few, we had a hard time hiring a director of business and finance. So a part of hiring the director in business and finance, we had a conversation about hiring a financial consultant to work with the individual for over a year. We have done that. It came up, all of the payments were in the check register, but about two meetings ago, it came up about how much we were spending. We did decide that we're going to discontinue. It has been a year. Every process has been ran through in terms of, or informed or guided in terms of Fed, audits, budget amendment, going through the budget, so on and so forth. So as of now, we are not working with the individual anymore and we should be ready to go.
Discussion. I know, I know I'll start. A couple of things may be tweaked. I know that at our finance meeting about five months ago, you told us that we were done because we had asked about it. And then the charges continued. And I would be remiss in telling you, I don't know that we agreed to a year. I knew that she was, the position was going to require somehow. I can tell you honestly, never did I ever think it was going to reach that amount. And I personally wish that we maybe, yes, it was in the check register, but I think I would have appreciated someone saying, look, we know that, you know, this is getting expensive because the cost of this is like a part-time person maybe. So it was a big expense as opposed to support. And so I'm just sharing with you as I did in the past. And then we did the last two finance meetings that have had concerns about the amount that was spent for support.
Absolutely. Can I add to? So I want to say that thank you for your concerns and I do want to point out, thank you for acknowledging that all of these payments were in the check register and they were approved by the board. Moving forward, I do need, and we do want all hands on deck to make sure that we are fiscally responsible. So every time I send out the check register, I welcome everyone to send me an email as long as it's at nine A M before we have the board meeting. Please send me an email and say, hey, this is a concern and I would do everything in my power to give you guys an answer. But I want us all to know that it takes all of us to make sure that we are financially responsible and I welcome anyone's opinions, questions, comments, or concerns about any line item on the check register. So let's work together moving forward and we're definitely going to make sure communication is both ways.
It's got to be a bit more clear because I know that our treasurer had called about this months and months ago. And you go ahead, you can speak.
The first time I called, I wanted to know what A and M Consulting was. Oh, it's a consulting firm that we use. That was my, that was the response I got. I don't know what that means.
Did you ask for follow-up or did you just accept the response?
She told me that was all she could tell me. It wasn't until I came into the board office one day and there was a lady at the front desk, I won't mention any names, she actually showed me the invoice. And that's when Cindy and I started questioning. And that's when I realized it's only one person using this one consulting firm. I don't like when the check register says supplies. I don't like when it says materials. I don't know what that is. I think sometimes I drive people crazy calling the board office. I mean, I had a list this, and if I hadn't been getting, echo down today on my heart, I would have been calling about all of these. Oh, yeah, I already asked you about that. Because I had questions on them. I didn't get to ask those questions, but most of them, I kind of know what they are.
Can I reply? I think moving forward, once we had an interruption in our accounts payable, I specifically told you that if you have any questions about anything on a line item, you can send me an email, a text message, or anything. Once again, communication is two ways. If there's an item that you want to dig, anyone wants to dig a little deeper in and ask for an invoice, send me a text message, send me an email. And if it's something I don't know, within 24 hours, I will promise to have the answer for you moving forward. But you got to ask the questions that I know you have to ask me in order for me to answer. So push, I'm telling you to push us. If you feel like you don't understand the invoice, Ms. Perry, I don't understand this invoice. Can I please meet with you so you can understand it?
Generally, I just have you guys send me a copy of it through email.
Absolutely. And let's continue that partnership moving forward. We are a team, we have to work together. I'm going to hold you accountable, you hold me accountable.
Yeah.
All right. I have another question. Does anybody else have something they want to ask or say? The other thing is, my concern, and we need clarity for all of us, you guys that work at the board office and those seven of us that are sitting here. And I shared this with you. At what point would we have required a board vote? Because it can't be a $10,000 a month, whatever the threshold is, I'm using 10,000 as an example. Every month, so it's under the 10,000, so it doesn't have to come in front of the board. Because the total amount of this exceeds what normally could be approved. So I think that we all need to be on the same page and be of the same understanding so that if and when it got to X dollar amount, it triggered another level of response.
So to your point, you do need board approval when one transaction is over $10,000. So let's talk this through. How do you guys want to move forward? For example, Amazon, we would never spend $10,000 on Amazon. However, over the course of the year, because of how we order, we get cheaper pricing for Amazon. If Amazon is the vendor, what do you need to know and what do you want to know in order to say, hey, how much are you guys spending on Amazon?
And since you and I are talking, okay, one of those was over 10,000. One of the bills was, so.
And you approved it on the check register?
It got approved on the check register. But I am saying that even at that point, we need to have a conversation. We all need to see. I talked to every single one of the board members and no one said that the amount was not surprising, was not concerning, was not, and I don't want to put words in everybody's mouth. This brings us to a come to Jesus moment where we have to decide from this point on what it's going to be. Because 3,000 every month for services rendered, we're not buying product. It's a service rendered. And I'm not going to put from any, everybody, I'm just saying, we all have to come to an agreement because for you and for any of us that is sitting here in a year, in five years, we need to have an understanding of. Because my thing was always cumulative. The 10,000 was cumulative. It was not per month. So in old school, it was 10,000.
So maybe we need to have this conversation when we have our bylaws meeting. I know you guys did not want me really to be a part of updating the bylaws because that's how you guys function, but I will recommend maybe we reach out to our policymaker. And when you guys have your next bylaw meeting, maybe we can send him a question about that and then we look at that bylaw and then we can adjust it accordingly.
President Holder.
Trustee, not Caroline Taylor.
I have a question. When was the $10,000 limit set? Was it when we were a much bigger district?
Just, is that the common rule for most districts? It's just common.
Trustee Chambles.
In January of 2021, when we came on the board, I believe it was at that time either 3,000 or 5,000 and the superintendent at that time requested that it be changed to 10,000.
Actually, 9,999.
Right, once they hit 10,000. But yeah, it happened in 2021.
So we standard has been 10,000. We had it lowered before.
Yeah, we're also a much smaller district.
I believe the state is 24,000. The 10,000 that we impose was part of our bylaws. We did that. It's not a state requirement.
Trustee Chambles.
We also had a superintendent at that time that was quite frequently coming to the board asking if he could have control or power to do certain things that the board generally had more control over, like releasing more and more vendors off of having to get approval from us for purchases and just making them considered essential so he could just write the checks and handle them and things like that. And so more and more power got taken away from the board.
So can I suggest that Lieutenant Perry get some information? You are on the bylaw committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Gloria's on the bylaw committee. And we have to discuss them all as a group before they're passed anyway. So maybe this is something that we can all work on and come back to, but not, not at a later date. Like the bylaws, we still haven't gotten them. And it's been months and months, we've never approved them.
All right.
So in a timely manner, because I want it to work for everybody, both sides of the table.
We all need to read you.
Trustee.
So for reference, it's in the bylaw section and it's P O six three two zero. So when we have our next bylaw meeting, can we just make sure we address it there?
Six three, what was it?
Six three two zero.
Definitely clarify if that's a month or a total.
It's up under, it's under policy. So P O, when we have our meeting, we can have the conversation. P O six three two zero.
Anybody else? Are we good? Can move on to the electric bus grant.
So I sent out an email last week. We are in the process of working with the company. We're not saying we're going to get electric buses, but there's funding available and I just need you guys' support or non-support if you want me to move forward. We're in the phase of applying for the grant. I have, I emailed the document last week and I just wanted to get your feedback. The grant will basically allow us to replace our fleet with half, half of our fleet with electric buses. It also will allow us to install electric chargers for the buses to use. The buses go about 100 miles with electricity. So the reason why it's only half is because some of the, well, in terms of electric buses, it's not common. So when one breaks down, we want to make sure we have a diesel bus just in case we need to go for a further distance, so on and so forth. So I just wanted to let you guys know what was going on. If no one objects, I'm not saying we're getting the grant. We just want to apply. We can apply and they say, hey, here's the money and we continue the process with the company and we don't feel like it's right, then we can pull out.
Trustee Chambles.
I think it's great that we're looking for financial opportunities. My only concern, and like you said, it doesn't necessarily mean you're doing it. My only concern is just, you know, the infrastructure, if the electric, you know, our grid is kind of outdated. There's, I mean, in the news, almost every day, there's conversations about the grid crashing and going down. I just don't want to ever be able where, you know, if that were to happen and our buses couldn't get somewhere. So it's a little scary, but I do also think it's kind of interesting and innovative. So I like it.
And then we, that was one of our concerns too, is because we know that these electric buses can go down, but you don't have a lot of electricians that's available to work on the buses. And they also said, so if we decide to move forward, it would be a full proposal that'll say, if this happens, this happens. This is our plan for this, so on and so forth, if we decide to move forward.
Caroline Taylor. Thank you. So we're just kind of exploring our options and so nothing's decided and it's just the go-ahead to explore it.
But a part of exploring is that I'm going to go ahead and apply for the grant and we can tell the federal government, no, we decided we don't want it.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, cool. And then the next item was 31 A A, 31 A A security funding. I will send you guys more details on that and we can further discuss.
Old Business, RFPs for the auditors.
We are in the process of, I think our goal is to have them out by December. What's at the date for the auditors? So after the audit for 25, 26, 24, 25 presentation will be at the November 17 board meeting. So once that's done, because we have to put some things in there, we'll send out the RFPs by December 1st. Let's just say December 1st with the return date, two weeks. Because if we have it, we can have it by January 1st. That way, when we have our first board meeting, we can look at it and then determine what auditors we're going to go with. Is that fair? And then the next item on O Business is the snow removal contract. I know we've been going back and forth. I wanted to get your input. It is November. We need to lock this in because a lot of companies have already locked their contracts in. So has there been any questions, any additional questions, comments, or concerns about the snow removal contract? Oh, can I add? We did have our meeting with the Weather Authority, and basically, they predicted that we're not going to have a bad winter. I know. I'm sorry, teachers and students. I know you want snow days, but...
That is the opposite, I have heard.
Yeah.
Wow. Sorry. I kind of thought it was going to be bad, but yeah.
For the record, I think the push approach should be the best approach. And part of that's because we get on the list first. When we pay a subscription fee, they're real late getting there. And I think it's going to be a milder winter, too.
Another issue came up. We were asking, you guys were asking about what does the push include? Does it include salt? We do not purchase salt from the snow removal company because we have a contract with the city of Madison Heights where we get salt for, for such a lower rate. So we don't, it does not include salt.
Madam President.
Trustee Kimball.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to eliminate item 8B.
Yeah, but can we, is everybody done talking about the snow removal?
No, I had a question.
Okay. Hang on one second. We have a trustee.
Thank you. We have a custodian, I think at the high school, who is outside, correct?
No.
He's inside.
But he does, every custodian.
Why can't he do in and out?
He does do. They do the walkways.
Okay.
So here's what happened. Every school.
Don't we have a vehicle that dispenses salt?
Yeah. But we don't have enough vehicles or manpower to clear the parking lot. So every school head custodial, if we have a snowstorm above two inches, they come in two hours early. They clear the pathways. The snow removal contract is only for ECC and Wilkinson Middle School parking lot. The head custodial staff clear the walkways. Our outside grounds person, which we only have one, clears the parking lot at MHS and MES because we did not replace the two individuals that we lost last year. So that's why there is a need for someone. It's cheaper to pay a company per push versus paying an employee. Not only is it cheaper, it's also hard to find an employee.
When they come in early to clear sidewalks and stuff, are we paying overtime?
Yes, it's in their contract. It's always been in their contract. This is nothing new.
Trustee Chambles.
But you said last year was only like 32 hours of overtime for the whole winter? Okay.
For clearing snow.
Right.
Or two buildings.
For four buildings. Every custodial staff has to clear their walkway.
Got it, got it. Anybody else have a question?
I agree with Mr. Kimball. I think we should do it per push if it's not going to be that bad of a season. And also because if they already have our money, they're not as likely to put us, you know, right up front and worry about us quickly. Whereas if other people are calling and saying, if you can be here in two hours, then, you know, we'll do it. Whereas if we do it by push, it incentivizes quicker.
So once again, the contract is not over $10,000. We don't have to bring it to the board. But we are bringing it to the board because we have an employee that's related to one of the contractors. So let, I just want to state that for the record. Like, this is nothing we really have to get approved. Per our bylaws, if we have someone in district related to any of our companies, we have to disclose it and let you guys know. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Because we want to move forward with...
I will just share, I really wanted to, to go with the company that was starting at two inches, especially with little legs.
All companies start.
The one, no, this. One says two, one says, uh, Big Lakes starts at four.
Hang on. I read through these very thoroughly. And the four inches is they have three starting prices. Big Lakes, because I was asking about the salt. They have an additional nominal fee for each building. And then it said... So wasn't expecting to cover it. Inch trigger. And expert one said... So much of my head's spinning. Expert one was they would come repeatedly per day. I didn't understand their salt.
Oh, one inch. They come at one inch repeatedly.
We do no salt. There's no salt applications because we do our own salt.
Right.
You're going to salt the parking lots if we have an ice storm?
Yes. We always salt our own parking lot.
Because it's cheaper to get it from the city. And we have a truck with the salt machine on the back.
Yes.
I'm wondering why we're hiring that out at all.
Because, I'm sorry, Professor.
Go ahead.
Professor, I just, I was like, I'm so sorry. It's passing by time. President Holder. What I heard, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the reason why we have to do that for the two buildings is we just don't have the staff. And the overtime would be outrageous. We just don't have the manpower for it. Is that correct, Superintendent Perry?
It's for the snow plowing exclusively, not for the salting because we're paying our staff to salt.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Okay, go ahead. Answer that, and then I'll ask my other question.
Correct.
Because I had concerns over the summer, which I expressed multiple times, about getting the service we paid for. And I wasn't shy. And I don't want to go back. I have concerns about going back to the same company.
Can I just make a statement?
For the stated reasons.
Can I just say one thing, Ms. President Holder? It, it in no way matters to me at all what company we take. I just want just to understand that other companies may not be able to guarantee us a specific time to remove snow. They cannot guarantee that. I just want to make sure that you understand that, that any other company cannot guarantee. I honestly don't care. You can ask Ms. Perry. I told her, just go with a different company because it would make life easier for me. But just know that they can't guarantee a time to come and do the snow.
And the company in question can guarantee time?
Yes.
And they have in the past. They've been here before school opened.
I personally think that makes the world of difference just because of the business we're in. And we have to make sure. I understand the concerns. I understand everything. I'm just saying, like, when it comes down to, kids don't care. They just don't want to walk through, you know, four inches of snow. And if we can get a guaranteed removal, I would rather go with that.
But he's in agreeance. Trustee Thompson. Approval of the 25, 26 budget amendment number one. The 25, 26 budget amendment number one reflects updates based on the recently approved State of Michigan School Aid Budget preliminarily, preliminary data from the 24, 25 fiscal year audit to pre-presented in November and the October 25 pupil count, which will be certified later in November. The amendment incorporates revised revenue and expenditure estimates aligned with current state funding levels and enrollment projections. These updates are required by the State of Michigan for submission by November 7, 2025, along with the district evaluation plan, elimination plan. This says evaluation. Elimination plan and corresponding board approval documentation. These figures are subject to change during the amendment, too, as many state and federal grant allocations remain uncertain or pending final approval. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the budget amendment number one. I need a maker in support.
President Holder.
Trustee Chambles.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approves budget amendment number one.
Pass support.
Trustee Thompson, support, discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Kristyra McElpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Dr. Narachunda is the approval of the 25, 26 deficit elimination plan. So we actually...
I made a motion to amend the agenda.
Trustee Kimball.
To eliminate that. Do you make the motion again?
I support.
Got it? Any discussion? Hearing none. The, the vote is to eliminate B from the agenda. Roll call vote, please. Oh, yes. Go ahead and say why.
Before we move on to a vote, can I just add why we are eliminating the deficit elimination plan?
We, we heard it in closed session. Are you bragging?
Yeah. You ought to roll tonight. I like it. So we are happy to announce that, based off of the amended budget that we just adopted, we are not predicting a deficit for the, end of the 25, 26 school year. However, that is effective today, but I do want to go on the record and say that we are still adjusting our budget based off of funding that we are may, that we may or may not receive from upcoming grants, so on and so forth. We will have a real accurate picture in February. But right now, we are not facing a deficit for the 25, 26 school year. But we are still putting measures in place to make sure that we are not deficit spending. That's it. Good job.
Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambles?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Kimball?
Yes.
Kristyra McElpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
This is two committee reports. GRC, do we have one?
Nothing to report.
HRC?
Nothing.
HRC?
Nothing.
Finance Committee?
Nothing.
Enrollment Committee?
Nothing.
Board Comites? Trustee Thompson, go ahead.
I'd like to congratulate everyone who got an award tonight. That's about all. I'm glad everybody's here except for two people.
Thank you. Trustee Chambles.
Congratulations to all the Students of the Month and Employees of the Month. Congratulations to the Varsity Football Team, our MAC Bronze Division Champions, and for winning round one of playoffs last Friday. I am wishing them the best for this Friday at home versus Clarkston Everest Collegiate in round two. Good luck to the Varsity Lady Eagles Volleyball Team, who goes to their round one of districts this Wednesday at Shrine High School versus Warren, Michigan Collegiate. Congrats to the Steel Wings Robotics Team for taking third place at the first Okra meet this past Saturday. Their next competition is November 15th. So it is a great fall to be an Eagle. And just a reminder, tomorrow is an election. So thank you all for watching.
Trustee McElpine-Taylor.
I think you guys all said it all pretty good. Have a good night.
Thank you. Trustee Kimball.
Congratulations to Students of the Month, Employees of the Month. And I have to admit, I was reading the district's Facebook page when the featured board member was up, and it was Rebecca. And I was absolutely shocked. You have a master's degree in science? You do?
Yeah, I do.
You have a master's degree?
Yeah.
That's great.
I will say for all who joined us, congratulations to us for not having to approve a deficit elimination plan. And I'm motion to adjourn. Trustee Thompson? Kristyra McElpine-Taylor, support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good night. It is 9:46.
Thank you, guys. See you on the 17th.